I'd like to call this August 14, 2018, meeting of the Burnaleo County Commissioners to order. We will have a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner O'Malley. Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Mister Chair Commissioners, we just have one change, and that is item 3A. If we can go ahead and move that to item 11F because it was added late to the agenda, and that is all.
Mister Chairman.
Yeah, Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you Mister Chairman, and in addition to those, that change, I would like to propose two others. The first one would be to defer item 4B, which is a proclamation acknowledging the tremendous achievements of Alex Bregman. I realize that that is probably premature, that we still have half the baseball season left to go, and there may be some things to add to that, so I would just like to defer that to a later commission meeting. I would also like to propose deferring item 11A, which is the resolution in support of gun violence reduction measures. This is an, and I realize that this is an issue that is extremely important to many of us, to many of our constituents. It wasn't until our meeting last week, or sorry, last month, that it, I became aware that there were other commissioners working on similar, a similar proposal, and I have reached out to one of my fellow commissioners without success to date, but I think Commissioner Kazad and I might be willing to do some work on that together to try and build consensus. I've also had meetings with some of the individuals who came to our last commission meeting with concerns about that, and I would like to incorporate those into whatever we do as a final thing. So again, if there is a willingness to work with me on that, I would like to defer that. If not, then I would like to just go ahead and hear it tonight.
Okay, thank you so much, and that's it, that's what we have. So there will not be, so you know out there, there will not be any discussion on the gun measures. Okay, so moving on.
Well, Mister Chairman, although...
Because we just pulled it from the agenda. Not at all, sir. I'm just saying, so you know, excuse me, sir, so you know, we just pulled that off the agenda. That's all I said. I didn't say I didn't want to hear your thoughts. I did not say that, sir. I would, I hope you do. Moving on to proclamations.
Mister Chairman, votes need to be fired.
Okay, so can I have a vote on...
I propose we make those three changes to tonight's agenda.
Okay, and we have, and we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We will go now to proclamations. Vice Chair Talbert.
Thank you Mister Chair. Would Miss Noelle Sauer come down to the podium, please? She asked me not to do this, and I said, "Okay, I won't do it," and then my new assistant, Jennifer, talked her into coming, so there's a piece of her that enjoys a little public humiliation once in a while, so. But anyway, this is Noelle Sauer, and she has been my chief of staff for the last six years as a commissioner. It was the first person I talked to to ask if she would be willing to come work with me with no idea who I was or what I was going to do, and she actually said yes, and I was like, "Oh, my God, okay." So I was lucky enough and locked her in for six years, and the only reason that she's not staying anymore for the next two is because she actually graduated law school and is in the process of passing the bar and will become a lawyer here very, very quickly, and so, in recognition of that, I'd just like to recognize her real quick. Certificate of recognition given to Noelle Sauer, Burnaleo County District 4, Commission Assistant. For your outstanding efforts to serve Burnaleo County District 4 and the citizens of Burnaleo County, as Commission Assistant for Commissioner Lonnie C. Talbert, you have provided positive service to Burnaleo County on a daily basis. You have consistently supported District 4 with the utmost pride, dignity, and professionalism expected of a county employee. Your dedication and tenure as Commission Assistant has provided stability and consistency for District 4 constituents for the past six years. Your responsiveness, concern, and attention to detail have allowed issues for all Burnaleo County citizens, regardless of their district of residence, to receive quick and complete resolution. Thank you for your dedication and service to the public, Commissioner Lonnie Talbert in Burnaleo County District 4 for the past six years, presented this August 14, day of 2018. And I, I appreciate it. It's been an honor, and I wish you the best in what you're going to do next. And if that doesn't work out, well, I already hired Jennifer, so you're out of luck. Sorry, but I'll give you a good letter of reference, you know that, no problem at all, you can count on that. So I wish you the best, Noelle. Anything you'd like to say? Okay, good.
So now we will go to certificates and awards. Madam County Manager, please proceed.
Mister Chairman Commissioners, it's always my pleasure, probably one of the highlights of my job, to be able to present these awards, so these are the employee, this is our employee recognition program, the Employees of the Quarter, for the fourth quarter for fiscal year 18. So if y'all could come down, I appreciate it. So first of all, Paola, oh gosh, she's our Administrative Assistant Senior in the County Manager's office. So she's the one that, that when you walk in, always has a beautiful smile and greets everybody with enthusiasm every day, so I could say that firsthand. Pleasant professional customer service, provides a high level of support, works on projects to make the department more efficient with inventory and document routing. 2010 to 2013, worked seasonally as a cashier in the aquatics program. She was hired full-time in 2013. She joined HR in 2016, and we stole her. So she came to the County Managers in April of 2017. She's married to, for two years, to her husband Carlos, and she loves spending time with family and friends, board games, good conversation, and delicious food, too. Congratulations. All right, and next is Shirley Smith. Come on over here Shirley. She's a voting rights coordinator, and so Shirley joined the county in 1998. She works to engage the voting rights of the American Indian groups within our county. The, let's see, the Karis, Tiwa, and Navajo, and established extensive outreach programs for election processes. So for the school, county, state, and federal elections. So I didn't realize that you had been here since 1998, that's a long time, so. We're happy to have you, we're very fortunate to have you. So she recruits language interpreters for Karis, Tiwa, and Navajo languages, provides language assistance throughout election process. Shirley is Dinay, Dinay Navajo, married for 30 years. Wow, that's cool. Has four children and nine grandchildren. She enjoys outdoor activities, traveling, and tribal cultural events. Her passion is teaching the Dinay Navajo language to young and interpreting for the elderly. So thank you for everything you do. Congratulations. All right, Ken, we see you all the time because you always help us out, so. Ken Ruder from IT, he's a technician, too. So Ken has been with the county for 11 years, from providing desktop support to undertaking complex projects. He's demonstrated a positive attitude, continuously expands and shares his knowledge, offers leadership, provides ideas for improving processes and conserving county resources, is an Albuquerque native, Sandia High School and CNM graduate, the proud father of a 19-year-old daughter who graduated from high school this year, congratulations, that's awesome. Enjoys golfing, fishing, and camping, collects Superman memorabilia since childhood, and a huge Minnesota Vikings fan. We all know that, so congratulations, good job. All right, and next, for public safety, Miguel Rivas from the Sheriff's, she's, he's from the Sheriff's Department, a sheriff's deputy. So he completed BCSO in 2004, served in many capacities such as the Field Services Division as a patrol deputy, Criminal Investigations Division as a crime scene investigator, a member of various teams. Primary assignment for the last five years is an instructor for the Gang Resistance Education and Training Program. That's our great program, so, and that's huge, so thank you for doing that, we appreciate it. So this, this program teaches in elementary and middle schools, and through this program, we recently heard that you've made an impact on an 11-year-old daughter of one of our county employees, along with her classmates. That's huge, so thank you for making a difference. Provided guidance on bullying, gossip, and what to do in case of an emergency. Off-duty, he enjoys working with children. He strives to be a positive role model. Enjoy spending time with his family, also has his dog, Aja, who is a 130-pound, wow, South African Mastiff, loves basketball and recreational shooting. So congratulations, and thank you, appreciate it. All right, next, Colleen Brunson. Let's see, Stormwater Program Compliance Manager. So you joined the county in June of 2016, has over 18 years of experience in water resources, water resource planning, stormwater management, water quality monitoring, and environmental investigations. And I will tell you firsthand, she is super impressive, and, and really, you, every time we meet with you, I mean, she is just, has this knowledge, just so much knowledge, and we're so happy to have you working for the county and helping us with our projects. She ensures the county complies with the EPA National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, municipal separate storm sewer systems permits, coordinates internal and external training and outreach to promote the program, values spending time with her family whenever she has a chance, right? I know, you're very busy, I know that. You love yoga, hiking, camping, and exploring the outdoors with her son, so thank you very much, appreciate you. Nicole Wiggins. She's Administrator Officer 3 in General Services. So she joined the county about nine years ago, has worked at animal care services and emergency communications, also partnered with unclaimed and inigent cremation program, and you all know how successful that program is, so thank you for all your work on that because we wouldn't be where we're at today without your help. Currently with the Constituent and Support Services Department, tackles each day with dedication, devotion, and high level of pride, works closely with her director to support the county's mission towards the performance excellence using the Baldridge Framework. Delights in working on special projects and supporting the department, the division, and all of your teammates. Keeps a tight rein on the budget, thank you, we appreciate that. Married 14 years to husband Manny, has one son Isaiah, and you enjoy golfing to the, going to the ranch and, what's that? You going to the ranch with your husband? Oh, where you have cattle? Oh, right, okay. Fishing, visiting the casino, really? Do you win anything? I don't even bother. Most importantly, spending time with family and friends, so congratulations, and thank you. And last but not least, Dominika Naya, Corrections Officer at the MDC. So you joined MDC in 2009, quite, that was quite a transition for you, I understand. So you was never exposed to drugs or violence before, and, you know, so I think you were, you're now a little bit more exposed to all that, so you're currently assigned to segregation and intake. Has learned through observation how various drugs affected the body differently, has gotten to know each of the inmates, their names, and that's real important, that is real important, so thank you for doing that. Has made several major narcotic fines, preventing these from getting to inmates, ensuring the safety of the inmates and staff. His ability to detect drugs has earned him the nickname K-9 Anaya. Uh-oh, the Sheriff Department, they might need you, that's another story. Has been married eight years, actually met his wife at the jail. She was an EMT, and they have, they have a very special daughter. She's had various challenges since her birth, but loves to play in her pool with her daddy, and he loves hanging out with her. What's her name? Emily? Emily. Also enjoys grilling and working on becoming an expert golfer. He also has a delightful sense of humor, so you have to have one, I know that. It's a tough job working at the MDC, so thank you very much, appreciate it. Congratulations. All right, thank you all.
Right, we'll now go to Board and Committee Appointments. So we have the Water Protection Advisory Board Appointments. So we have three nominees in two positions. So what we'll do is, I guess we will go one at a time and vote that way. I don't, I don't know any other way to kind of make that fair, so. I think you would, yeah, I think you would vote for... So how would we do that to make it, yeah, fair?
Mister Chairman, in the past, what we've done is, the order that they are listed, each nominee is nominated and then a seconded for their nomination and then a vote. So we can proceed that way, so that each nominee gets a nomination. It just depends on the votes and the second.
All right, so we will go with number one.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to move the reappointment of Steve Glass to the Water Protection Advisory Board.
I got a motion and a second, okay. All in favor signify by saying yes. All opposed? No, motion fails. We'll go to the appointment of Roberto Roibal to the Water Protection Advisory Board. I move for the appointment of Roberto Roibal. I have a second. All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. All opposed? Moving on to appoint, reappointment of Julia Messini to the Water Protection Advisory Board. Do I have a motion?
Mister Chair, I move the reappointment of Julia Messini to the Water Protection Board.
Okay, and a second. All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. All opposed? And there we go. Thank you so much. Congratulations to our appointees. We will now go to public comment, and so, public comment, you will have two minutes to speak. You'll be given a 30-second notice to wrap up your comments, and a final notice when your time is up. When your name is called, please make your way down to the podium and state your name for the record before your comments. So what we'll do, the best way to do it is, once they call your name, please come down and be ready to speak so we can accommodate as many as we have signed up this evening to speak. So Julie, if you would, if you would.
We have 15 signed up currently, however, we do have one communications by UNMH. Did we want to start with that?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you very much, good evening, Mister Chair and County Commissioners. So I have the fourth quarter report from, first of all, my name is Mike Chicorelli, and I serve as an administrator at University Hospital. I'm standing in tonight for Kate Becker, who is our CEO, and I have the fourth quarter report for you this evening. So I believe we've included not only hard copies of your packet, you should have those in front of you, so I'll briefly cover some of the highlights in that report. Access to primary and specialty care remains stable. In fact, we've seen an improvement in access over the last quarter to our primary and outpatient and specialty clinics. Inpatient activity remains very high as usual, we're very busy in the inpatient sector. However, our length of stay and 30-day readmission rates are below national benchmarks despite that. ED visits are, so the emergency department visits are stable, the left that being seen volume is lower than prior quarter, and we continue to make improvement in that area as well. Patient experience has improved in this quarter, particularly in the behavioral health area, and also in the outpatient setting. We are flat to prior quarter in the inpatient setting. We're financially stable for the year end with a net asset of about $386,000, that's stable. Behavioral health activity remains very, very stable at this time. Satisfaction remains well above the national benchmark. And pending questions, that concludes my report.
Right, do we have any comments, any, no? Thank you so much, we appreciate it. Oh, Commissioner Talbert.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for your service in the interim. I know that there was a national search, and the new president of the hospital will be there, so thank you for your service in between. It's never an easy thing to fill a gap, but you did it with honor and dignity. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Mister Chairman, wait, before you go.
Commissioner Stevens.
I also wanted to say thank you. It's really been a pleasure working with you and your, in your service as the interim CEO. And I'd like to just tell a quick story about the CEO. I was in the ER a couple weeks ago with my father, and who, like knocks on the door, but CEO Mike Chicorelli. And it was actually really amazing. He was one of the first people to see my father, and he, it was wonderful to see him do what he does really, really well, and he was just competent and caring and took care of everything. So I just wanted to say, you know, it's wonderful to see people, you know, all the different areas of expertise that they have, and I just want to say thank you. I know you didn't have to come, but it was really kind of you to do that, and we are all really grateful for what you did. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie.
Okay, with that, we'll get started on public comment. Chris Toledo. Sophie Shemas. Robert Mousied.
Mister Chair, Commissioners, my name is Deputy Chris Toledo. I work for the Burnaleo County Sheriff's Office. I am also the Union President for the BCSDA. To my right here is Colleen Boltman. She is our Union Vice President, Union Secretary Erin Verlade, and my six-year trustee, Mister Zaling. Behind us are our amazing undersheriffs who are here to support us as well. And I came here today to talk about our current situation with the Sheriff's Office. As you guys know, we've had 13 deputies have left for APD so far this year. We know that 38 more deputies are in this process for APD to leave. Our last academy class graduated a total of 27 cadets. If this, if the 38 that have gone do process and go to APD, we'll be negative 24 officers so far this year. Now, we do have another academy coming up. It was scheduled for October 2018. It however got pushed back to January. So at the earliest time, any new cadets coming into our department, they will not be available and on their own till November of 2019. Three of the officers that left, two APD were our K-9. Almost our entire K-9 unit has disappeared. Those three officers, those three deputies, I'm sorry, cost the county almost a million dollars. The total number is $883,000 to train them. That is not including any other specialties they carry, such as SWAT team, several of them are FTOs, and a lot of them are, are more senior deputies, 12 years or more in the department. We also lost several guys in our aviation unit, which is also a high expense to train. Now, I know we're running out of time here, so I'll keep it quick, but APD is capitalizing on our, on the funds that the county is paying to train and utilize our deputies. They know this, the financial burden between the two, we can't, and most people, or most deputies, can't justify staying with the department for the difference in pay and incentives for them. So I know we're at a time. I have a little more to say. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, we're gonna go ahead and have a comment. Commissioner Talbert.
Thank you Mister Chair. Right now, what is the pay gap between APD and BCSO in terms of them jumping ship and moving over?
It's substantial. For me, I ran that numbers for myself, just so we have an example. I have six years with the department. I'm a detective with the Special Victims Unit. I have a bachelor's degree from UNAM, and the pay difference, if I were to leave today, would be $20,000. That's how, how big of a difference it is. Now, that's not to include specialty pay, so if I was an FTO, you get paid more as a detective. You get paid more for time on. The longevity has since increased. So there's a much more incentive. They have higher, more opportunities to train, more opportunities to move, and they have newer equipment than we do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mister Chair, County Commissioners. My name is Sophie Shemas, and I work with the New Mexico Wildlife Federation. I've already spoken to several of you, so I will keep this quick. I wanted to speak on the Land and Water Conservation Fund Resolution to be heard later tonight. Thank you so much to Commissioner Hart-Stevens and Commissioner Smith for bringing it forward. Over $312 million and over 1,000 projects completed. That is the impact that the Land and Water Conservation Fund has had on our whole state. Back in 1965, Congress made a promise to American communities, saying that a slice of revenue from offshore drilling would be, would be shared to help support the conservation improvement of local parks, public lands, and community recreation facilities across the nation. the nation. LWC has been, been an integral part of our Burnaleo County community for the past 53 years, contributing nearly $7 million to our county and helping create outdoor spaces that have put our county on the map as a tourist destination, from the Sandias to Petroglyph National Monument to Vito or our National Wildlife Refuge, the first urban national wildlife refuge in the southwest. But more importantly, these funds have helped support projects to build healthier communities here locally, from Tingley Recreation Area to the Paradise Hills Community Center and dozens of parks throughout your districts. On behalf of the New Mexico Wildlife Federation and our over 80,000 members, I sincerely hope the Burnaleo County Commissioner will pass the resolution to be heard later this evening and tell Congress that our communities support the full funding and permanent reauthorization of the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Robert Malsied, Paul McKenney, William English.
I'm Robert Malsied from the Third Division, Third District. I spoke here in June and I came here again tonight to speak against the gun control resolution. But since it's been deferred and you do not wish to hear any comments, I hope that I will be able to speak again when this issue comes up. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Paul Ryan McKenney. I'm the Burnaleo County Chairman for the Libertarian Party of New Mexico. I'm sad to see that you've decided to defer the resolution on gun control. It would have been preferable to see it completely rejected this evening. We, the Libertarian Party, oppose all laws at any level of government restricting, registering, or monitoring the ownership, manufacture, or transfer of firearms or ammunition. It is said that there are lies, damn lies, and then statistics. The statistics that are included in this resolution are so cherry-picked and misleading that it's laughable. And yet, you would use this cherry-pick data to ask our representatives in Congress to violate their oath to uphold the Constitution. You would use this propaganda to ask Congress to violate our natural rights, rights that were recognized under English common law long before this country existed. The rights that our forefathers used to defeat the tyrant King George and to bring this country into existence. We urge you to oppose this resolution and any and all other gun control measures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I won't have no outbursts. If we're going to have outbursts, then we will continue on to this meeting. So, please, let's just keep going.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is William English. I also came to speak on the gun control resolutions, but as it's been deferred, I look forward to seeing what's, what has been worked out in the future between you, so we can address them directly as compared to in the abstract as, as we did seven weeks ago. Thank you for your, for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
Gary Newton, Rod Baker, Seth Ritchie, Eric Schultz.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Gary Newton. I'm from Sandia Park. I would like to voice my opposition to the Gun Violence Reduction Resolution on the grounds that it identifies the wrong reasons for violent crime in this state. The resolution basically says that possession of firearms is the problem. It implies that millions of law-abiding citizens who arm themselves for self-defense are the problem. Yet, we know just by listening and reading the news that we do not have sufficient law enforcement officers on the street in this county. The criminal justice system in this state refuses to put violent criminals in prison, but instead releases them without bail, gives plea bargains or probation, or reduce sentences, and then approves early release. We have a violent crime problem because the government is not doing its job to protect the people. So, what do we do? We arm ourselves for self-defense. And now, this commission wants to recommend that it be made more difficult for us to do this while doing nothing about the real problem. According to a recently discovered Centers for Disease Control Study from 1966 to 1998, their behavioral risk factor surveillance system survey revealed that citizens use their firearms two and a half million times a year. That's about 6,500 times a day to stop crime. Yet, the annual firearm homicides are around 12,000. So, you can see that the vast majority of the time, just the presence of a firearm stops a violent crime, and that is 20-year-old data. As of 2016, there were 16.3 million concealed carry licenses, and this doesn't include citizens who carry in 11 states. So, just how much, so just imagine how much larger that number is now. Does the commission really want to ignore the lives that are saved with firearm ownership? Please consider both sides of the issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rod Baker, Seth Ritchie, Eric Schultz, Dan Born.
My name is Seth Ritchie. Thank you for letting me speak to you. Even though this is being shelved for now, I would just like to say my piece on it. My parents live in Sandia Park. And like the previous gentleman was saying, you know, he's took the words out of my mouth on a lot of things, but also, think about a lot of your rural constituents. They have to sometimes wait 30 minutes to an hour for the BCSO to get to them or their local police departments. And you want the best tools for the job. Shotgun, most people can't handle that. AR-15 is the best tool for the job. I have a female cousin and I would rather her have an AR-15 to stop a rapist coming through her window than, and nothing at all, instead of a phone. Gun control, when you really look at the facts and figures, does not work. If it did, Chicago would be the safest city in the country. Just two weeks ago, there were 70 people shot in just one weekend. And it leads, and their numbers keep going up and up and up every year. And they have every single gun control law that you can think of, magazine restrictions, no assault rifles, even though they're not real assault rifles, because a real assault rifle means that it has select fire, three-round bursts or automatic fire. An AR-15 is not an assault rifle. Basically, if you were to look at the actual statistics, if, on the United States, yes, is on number 10 on the list, around number 10 for per capita of gun violence in the world. But if you take out Los Angeles, Chicago, New York City, Boston, New Orleans, and a bunch of other cities with a great amount of gun control, we're near the bottom. So, gun control doesn't help. It's the fear of citizens shooting back that causes criminals to fear the populace, as they should. Please don't disarm us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have a copy for the Commissioners. Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, my name is Daniel Born. I'm a resident of District Four. I'm going to read from this, so I don't lose where I'm going. I was here to address the gun violence resolution. I'm going to make some comments on it, and a copy of what I was prepared for is being given to you. I am a lifelong citizen of Burnaleo County, a veteran, a retired 22-plus-year member of Burnaleo County's Public Safety, a business owner, a husband, a father, and a grandfather. I have a very much vested interest in this topic as well experience in it. I'm only going to hit a couple of the parts of the resolution for time. On one of your wheresses, gun-related injuries, deaths, and largely preventable through education and common sense reform of federal laws and govern the purchase, licensing, and storage of firearms. Banning assault weapons, rifles, would impact less than 4% of the weapons used in violent crimes as of the 2016 FBI statistics. Handguns, which is the largest number, are already restricted to those 21 years of age or older and are prohibited to carry by anyone under the age of 19 in the state of New Mexico. More laws and restrictions will not reduce crimes or deaths in New Mexico. Education and dealing with individuals both criminally and for those that it applies to with mental health treatment, both voluntarily and if needed involuntarily, will have the greatest impact. Education is mentioned in there? Absolutely. Everyone should be given proper firearm safety training. Mandate that in edu, education be brought back into the schools as it used to be, not only safety, but understanding the function, proper use, and storage of firearms. A well-informed person is a safe person. Governing, the laws are in place today. Regulate the sale and purchase of firearms. Enforce the laws. These laws are usually the first to be dropped and thrown out by prosecutors and judges and are not used at all in a lot of cases. Enforce the laws we have aggressively and you will reduce the problems. Storage, question is, how do you enforce storage laws? Mandatory home inspections, violating the Fourth Amendment, or is it just another law that is not going to be adhered to?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Eric Schultz. I drove a tow truck for a while in the city. I carry a gun 24/7 everywhere. The city of Albuquerque has become a cesspool of crime. We're 300 police officers short. Average response time for APD is about nine minutes. That shot's fired nine minutes. Now, I'd rather have a gun in my hand than a 911 operator on a phone. Another point I want to make is you guys are kind of responsible for our crime problem. You decided that you didn't want to hold prisoners in the jail, the metro detention center. So, we've been kicking them out, the police, and you can ask any cop in here, are they arresting the same people over and over? And he answers yes. Look at the idiot in Towes that let a terrorist who was running in a Muslim extremist training camp to teach children how to go shoot up a school and the judge lets him out with a signature. Really? I think you guys have forgotten why you're here. The other thing is read the Constitution. The Second Amendment of the Bill of Rights says in the first sentence, "The government must, shall maintain a well-armed militia." At the time, that meant men from 18 to 55. The second sentence is, "Nothing shall infringe the people," that's us, "right to bear arms." We have a right to defend ourselves. And in this city, you certainly need it.
Thank you.
Bob Finch, Robert Overton, Don Trader, Dale Perkins.
Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, my name is Bob Finch and I am a resident of this county. I was prepared to speak concerning item 11A, which has obviously been tabled. But I would like you to consider one thing when you redo, reconfigure, bring this up again, should you decide to. I'd like you to seriously consider that at the second level, what you are proposing will lead to gun registration in some form. There will be a list. This is not, cannot be, take place. What, what you're proposing doesn't come to fruition without a list of some kind. And of course, lists are subject, if they're stored on a computer, to being hacked, which leads me to my point. Gun owners don't want any form of a list. They call it registration. And with registration comes noncompliance and the creating of new criminals, a whole criminal class. In Connecticut, where this is now the law, there is an 85% noncompliance percentage. In New York, it's running at 95% noncompliance. You will be blamed individually and as a group for starting gun registration by gun owners. And I want you to seriously consider that, because even Democrats in the state that own guns could feel very unpleasant towards you when it comes time in the voting booth. Thank you for listening to me and have a pleasant evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Robert Overton. I actually reside in Sandoval County in Rio Rancho. However, I, I work here in Albuquerque some 60 to 80 hours a week. I'm here with some friends with American Patriot 3% tonight, as I've been to the legislature to kind of fight some of these unconstitutional bills that come across the desk every now and then. You know, I'm not at home a lot, but when I am, I want my kids to be safe. I carry a gun with me for protection 24 hours a day, seven days a week. There's a lot of bad people here, okay? When Albuquerque became a sanctuary city, and anybody can deny it they want, but let's face reality, it is, you guys basically gave leeway for Armageddon. There are those who are going to be here and be prepared. There are those that are going to be ready. I have a four-year-old daughter who's autistic. I'd like to see her grow up to be an adult, be able to get married, be able to walk her down the aisle. The way things are right now, you keep restricting people's rights who are legal, law-abiding citizens in this state, in this country. All that's going to lead to is lawlessness by those who are lawful. Start these lists, you're going to find out real quick that people are not going to comply with it. I am one of those people. I will not comply. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Trader. In New York, two brothers, both of them police officers, had 10 years of spotless records as cops. They got into an awful argument. One brother shot and killed his drunk brother. If anyone weeks earlier could have told these two brothers, when they were arresting other people, that one would shoot and kill the other, how would they have believed it? If anyone weeks earlier could have told Olympic athlete Oscar Pastoreus that he would shoot and kill his girlfriend, how would he have believed it? If anyone years earlier could have told Albuquerque Judge Gerald Cole that he would shoot and kill his wife and himself, how would he have believed it? Homes that have guns have twice the risk of someone killing someone else, three times the risk of a suicide than homes with no guns. A gun in the home is far more likely to shoot oneself, a family member, or a friend than to shoot a stranger breaking in. We all, we all are capable of terrifying violence. Good and evil are mixed together in all of us. Do not swallow the lie that only bad people will use guns wrong. None of us, none of us is immune to killing someone, even a close-loved one, in a moment of insane rage. Because I know that about myself and because I aim to live non-violently toward all people, I drink no booze and I have never, never owned a gun.
Thank you.
Dale Perkins and Chad Cantrell.
Good evening. I'm Dale Perkins and I'm from Perkins Protection Training. We teach people to lock their guns up in our classes. We go over the statistics about this. If you guys want to sit down and have a conversation, here's my business card. I would love to see it. Now, I've talked to you before. The honest citizen of Burnaleo, have you reached out and said, "Do you want these bills besides these little hearings that we didn't hear about until 8 o'clock this morning?" Put it on the vote. Put it on the ballot. Let's see what the citizens say. You're going to be shocked. We want our guns. We want our rights. I'm not a liar. I'm sorry. I do not appreciate that last language that I just got through hearing. I work real hard to teach classes to everybody and anybody that wants them. Right now, I'm sitting at over 3,500 students that's been through my classes, that I dealt with personally and their family. I'm not going to have my family destroyed. Tuesday, I made the comment over there at the campus. Are we turning into a police state? By God, no. It will not happen. I've been in all the legislation. A bunch of you guys probably know me or have seen me, but thank you for your time, your effort. If you want to get together and have a sit-down conversation on the gun laws that are not being enforced, that we need to have enforced, I would love to do that. Thank you very much for my time.
Thank you.
You have my business card.
We'll be in contact.
Good evening. Chad Cantrell, I'm an Albuquerque resident. I just want to be clear. I came here tonight to talk about the gun violence reduction measure, and I know you're not taking... not taking a vote or talking about that tonight. So I'll make some generalizations. I oppose all limiting of my rights. I will exercise my rights when I want to exercise them, but I do not want any politicians limiting my rights. If you guys want to do something that reduces violence, you can get after the sanctuary status that this city and our county has allowed, which brings in criminal illegal aliens and makes a sanctuary for them. If you would like to make a difference, go after those things. The law-abiding citizens are not the issue. We're here, and by definitions, criminals are not law-abiding. They don't follow rules. So these rules you make are only going to affect citizens like me that exercise their gun rights responsibly. I've treated many gunshot wound victims, and the saddest thing is when people don't have guns, and they're preyed upon. There's nothing sadder than that. People that haven't been involved in drugs or anything else, and they're preyed upon. And this commission is telling me that that type of activity is going to continue by going after the law-abiding citizens and not going after the criminals, and toughening up the criminal justice system, supporting our officers and our deputies. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you so much. We will now move to approval of minutes. I move to approve the June 26, 2018 administrative meeting minutes. Have a second? All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes? All opposed? Motion passes. We will go to the consent agenda. Can I have, Madam Clerk, can I have the resolution numbers for, number for 9A?
Mr. Chairman, 9A is AR 2018-53.
Okay. And, let me see here. Do I need the, yes. Yeah, we can do it. So we have one more speaker that didn't get here in time and wasn't able to sign up. So we'll allow him his two minutes.
And I definitely appreciate that, folks. Thank you. I apologize if I didn't follow the process. My name's Charles Oliver. I've been a registered nurse for twenty-three years, and for seven years before that, I was a paramedic and firefighter, and I'm a resident of the city of Albuquerque. I have a question. I'd like to know how many people have been killed by the firearms that you want to focus by in the state of New Mexico? Now, the FBI holds the best statistics on this, and year after year after year, they document two to three hundred long guns are involved in any type of deaths. And by long guns, they mean everything. AR-type weapons, any type of sporting firearm, and shotguns, two to three hundred per year out of a nation of three hundred and thirty million. If this were any kind of a medical study or a plan to do any type of medical research, that statistic would be considered statistically irrelevant, and it would not be entered into any considerable alteration of the plans. So based on that, I think it's pretty obvious that maybe two out of every three years or so, people die in the state of New Mexico, yet for that, you're willing to divide this state. And I don't think you really realize how divided this state would be and what that would look like. Well, I don't know what it would look like personally, but I do know that I will not disarm in any way, shape, or form. I know that none of us will disarm. Our progeny will not disarm. We will fight on this for generations. But let me end quickly on a positive note. There's a man named Ken Stern, you might know his name. He's the ex-CEO of NPR Radio. He's written a book called Republican Like Me. He considers himself a card-carrying liberal, and he does not like guns. But he accuses the left of sucking all the oxygen out of the room by only talking about gun control. Look, I've told you who I am, and other people have similar backgrounds. We stand ready to work for real solutions that do not divide this state, and instead of us fighting each other in very real ways, has us working together in very real ways. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we'll go back to the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And all opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you could give me the motioner, please?
What's that?
Who motioned and who seconded?
Motion by Commissioner Talbert and second by Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Smith.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt after the fact.
That's okay.
But I just had a question about the rescinding of the open burning ban, and I see Chief Perez is here. Does that mean we can start using our grills in these mountains? Is that?
Is that, yes. You got a thumbs up from the chief.
Okay, thank you. Ready to start making some hamburgers.
You're going to make hamburgers? All right. We're all going to your house, right?
Your own.
Oh, we can't. It'll be a quorum. All right. What? It's the truth. We have to post it. Post it that we're having a barbecue. Okay. All right. Good. So now, we're moving on to item C, but I think I'm missing a, this goes to I on our...
We're on 10A.
So we're on 10, 10A? I don't have 10A in my thing. No, I don't. Let me look at this. Yeah, let me make sure that something went wrong. Okay, I have it on this. We're good. You don't believe me, is what it is, I know. I make mistakes from time to time, I know. So 10A Economic Development, Notice of Intent to Adopt the Ordinance Under Local Economic Development Act Related to Project ICE. Okay, it was out of order, is what it was? But I'm right?
Right.
I'm half-right?
We'll share.
We'll share the responsibility? Okay, thank you. Okay, so, so we are going to the leader, yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the Economic Development Staff recommends the approval of the Notice of Intent Authorizing the Local Economic Development Agreement with Project ICE. I stand for any questions.
Commissioner Stevens? No?
I was just going to move approval.
Okay, so I got a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We will go to item 10B Economic Development for the Notice of Intent to Adopt an Ordinance Under the Local Economic Development Related to Project Rope.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the Economic Development Staff recommends the approval of the Notice of Intent Authorizing the Local Economic Development Agreement with Project Rope. I stand for any questions.
Do I have a motion? A motion for approval and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We will now go to Economic Development, item C. Do we have any public hearing? Yes, so we have a public hearing on item C.
We have one signed up, Andrew Stone.
Okay, and before that, Madam Clerk, can I get an ordinance number?
Yes, sir, that's ordinance 2018-21.
Thank you.
Andrew Stone, thank you, Chairman Casada, and fellow commissioners. Forty-four years ago, I came to study architecture and planning at UNM after having lived in Peru and Ecuador for two years. I've been living here in Albuquerque since seventy-four, and I fell in love, and at the time, I thought solar energy was going to save us, and I realized that time is now. And so I worked in software with Steve Jobs for a long time, and I've decided to spend the rest of my career working on the economic development of solar energy in New Mexico. So I came and worked for the last eight months finding out what the heck was going on when we have so much sun, so much land, but so little solar, only three percent. And it turned out, it was not a shortage of projects, but a shortage of available capital because the investments are long, twenty, thirty years. So I am very happy that you guys have developed a way for us to have the CPACE program here. And for the people that don't know about this, it was designed as a model for all stakeholders to benefit. The public gets cleaner air and water, owners get solar at zero percent down with immediate monthly energy savings and a more valuable property. The lenders get a senior lien backed by the county's tax collection authority, reducing their exposure and allowing lower long-term financing. Anyway, the county gets economic development and taxes, and the CPACE contract travels with the property, allowing longer investments to be made. My Solar Investment Group intends to establish a CPACE fund as soon as it becomes a possibility, but we need to know when that's going to be and whether it'll be countywide and not just the unincorporated part of Bernario County. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Smith, you have a question?
I do, Mr. Chairman, and he brings up a good question, and I don't know when this would go into effect. If we pass this ordinance tonight, when I was in the legislature, I had a very clear understanding, as Kenny Martinez can tell you, that if we had an emergency clause, it was immediately upon the signature of the governor or basically ninety days after the session was over. So when would this go into effect if it was passed tonight?
Excuse me, sorry, Mr. Stone.
And I'm probably directing that to either the county manager or our county attorney.
Actually, I'm bringing Mike Garcia down, Commissioner, if you don't mind, to answer that question.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Smith, the, I'll try to make the, I'll start with the end first. I think that before we'll be able to take advantage of the CPACE ordinance, we're probably going to have to have some state legislative action. And so it'll probably have to be after the next, this coming legislative, legislative session. The idea that, I think what we're trying to work with is to stand up the CPACE ordinance in anticipation of what we can possibly, probably get passed through the state legislature so that it will be in place, kind of leading, leading the way for that to happen. So just in terms of time, I think we're looking at following the state legislature.
And thank you, Mr. Chair. My understanding was we needed that legislative fix that I know that some commissioners are working on, that we needed that legislative fix to make it countywide, but it could be done in the unincorporated area now.
And so that's my understanding, that we can right away go into the county and the unincorporated area and start moving forward with CPACE, and that we couldn't do anything until the legislative's fixed for, within the city limits. And that's what was brought to my understanding, and that's what we thought was happening today.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Smith, the best way that I can describe it is that at this point in time, the structure of state statute would not allow us to implement a lien, a tax lien, at this time with the CPACE. So I think what we need is a state statute, state tax lien authority to do that. And that applies both in the incorporated area and in the unincorporated area. So on both of those counts, the answer is that we need state statute to do that.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Wow, and you know, and this is the first time I'm hearing that. Is there anything we could do amendment-wise to fix that tonight?
Mr. Chair, I don't think so, not the way that the CPACE ordinance is structured, because it's based on a, it's actually based on a Virginia Arlington, Virginia Arlington County model, which has structures in state statute that is a bit different from ours. And for it to operate predictably and efficiently, I would recommend against doing that.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, it sounds like if that's the case, and I trust your judgment on that, that any legislative fix, as you know, probably doesn't get done until the last day of the session, which is March 16th, and then the new governor will have twenty days after that to sign or veto whatever that legislation would be. So I think we're looking at least April of next year before this ordinance could go into place.
And, Mr. Chair, just to clarify a point, I mean, we can put it, we can put it into effect, so to speak, by codifying it at this time. There's nothing that prevents us from doing that, if that is the question. But for it to take effect and actually work, it's going to need state statute to do that.
So I think my comment would be that I would like to go ahead and pass this, so we are already, ready to go, so when it does get to the point, and I believe that it will, you know, this year, get through the state. I have to be optimistic about that. And we're ready to go as soon as that happens. If that answers your question. I was hoping it was tomorrow, to be honest with you, at least within the unincorporated area, but I'm not the legal expert here. That's why we pay the big bucks to our legal team. And he's laughing at me because I said the word "big bucks." And do we have a question? Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You mentioned the county's role in this. Could you explain that again?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, the, I think the thrust of this particular ordinance is to utilize the county's lien authority. And that way, an investor or a lender who is lending for commercial property would be able to take advantage of a lien that had the same priority as a state, or, sorry, as a property tax lien. So that's their incentive, that's their security for making the loan. But the county's involvement is more or less limited to that. And there are a few other things that will come up as far as the administration of it, but that's the crux of this particular approach in this ordinance.
But the county would have a senior, a senior position?
Correct. It doesn't usurp, my understanding, and I defer to the attorneys, it doesn't defer the county's position, it just allows it for this one time, place in time for the, to guarantee the loan for the solar energy efficiency and the, and the energy efficiency program.
This would be for commercial and residential?
At this point, Commissioner, it would be strictly commercial.
Okay, but at some point, are they saying that they want it to be residential?
Yes, and we're hopeful of that happening. Most states, most, or most local governments are starting with commercial to implement it, get it started, see what the demand is, see if we can get this going. So we have time to educate our community to really understand how the program works and then to move to residential.
Right, and that was, you know, I think we've talked a little bit about that, how important it is to have education so that folks are not taking advantage of, and realize what it means to have a tax lien against your property, and making sure that we have reputable folks who are working with individuals. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if I may, I just want to reiterate that it will take us some time. We have to wait the thirty days for it to go into action. At that point, then, we will put out the RFP for the third-party vendor to help, help operate this, because we don't have the capacity at this current moment within staff to vet the financial vendors. We also don't have the capacity within the county staff to vet the solar industry individuals. So while that is problematic, we need to make sure that we have somebody helping us to operate this so that it is successful. So given that time lapse, despite the fact that we do have to wait for the, for this or, for the change at the legislature, I think actually the timing will work out quite well. By the time we're ready to go, the information, the education will start rolling out. At that point, we'll be close to January, we'll roll out the, we'll be working with our local state and state legislators to change that, along with the newly-elected governor, to move that forward.
Okay, all right. And that makes sense, right, that it's going to take time. Okay. So I move for approval?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair?
I just have a couple of questions.
If that's right. So when this came up the last time, I think I had a couple of questions about it, and I just want to make sure that these have been resolved. The first was, this is not exclusively solar, but it could be used for weatherization, so energy improvements.
Yes, energy efficiency improvements is the language that we're using in the ordinance tonight, so, yes, Commissioner.
So that could be new windows, insulation.
Exactly. Yes.
My second concern, I think, was that the minimum amount was significant. Has that changed?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, we have changed that to twenty-five thousand, which for a commercial building for new windows and/or insulation should be about the right, the minimum amount that would be needed for that. And, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, by my, by legal standards, I'm supposed to read the statement. the statement.
Please do. Can I ask my final question?
Please, I'm sorry, I apologize, Commissioner.
Sorry. So, my final question was, and I'm not, I think, I'm not sure I understood the discussion, is there still a question as to whether this is applicable within the city of Albuquerque?
Correct. Currently, the ordinance does include the city. However, there is a state statute that needs to be changed to allow us to operate that within the city limits. So, it is in the ordinance and will be pursued in such a manner. However, there is some state legislation, just additions, that need to be added to include that.
Clarifications.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All in favor, signify by saying, oh, no, you read your statement.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the Economic Development Staff recommends the approval of the ordinance authorizing the Bernalillo County Commission to approve the creation of the Bernalillo County Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy CPACE Financing Program, and I stand for any additional questions.
Hearing none, and we already have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All oppose, the motion passes. I would like to make a quick statement, and I thank everybody involved, and worked really hard to try to move this forward. You know, I think that we're going to get there. I think you need to have faith in, and that we're going to get there on the state level. And I'm going to make my commitment to everybody in the room that's worked really hard, that I will go to the state, and I will be standing next to you to make sure that all the fixes are put in place, and that we can go on a state, a statewide, right? And not just Bernalillo County, but the whole state of New Mexico, and it would be a great thing. Thank you so much for your work. You've done an amazing job, and I'm very, very honored to have worked with you on this.
Thank you, Commissioner, that means a lot, thank you very much.
Okay. Operations and maintenance, we will now conduct a public hearing on the operations and maintenance. Madam Clerk, do we have an ordinance number and an AR number?
Yes, sir, ten-one, or D1 is ordinance number twenty-eighteen-twenty-two.
Okay.
And D3 is AR twenty-eighteen-dash-fifty-four.
Okay, thank you so much. And do we have any public comment? No, we have no public comment, then?
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Adrienne Condaladia, I'm the manager of the Solid Waste Program. There's three motions for your consideration tonight, and I'd like to take them in order. The first one is to approve amendments to the Bernalillo County Code, Chapter Seventy, Solid Waste. In summary, those amendments clarify some existing language, add some definitions, refine a few. We also pull out the current penalty in the ordinance, and will establish that in another motion in an administrative resolution. And we also, in the ordinance changes, are removing the Solid Waste Advisory Committee because it fulfilled its purpose over twenty years ago when this program was first started. So, that's, we did receive one public comment through our, through the county's online publication of the ordinance, and I responded to that gentleman in a letter and mailed it out to him, and I did not hear anything back. And those comments were generally about some clarification on some of the definitions and other things. I stand for questions on the first item.
All right, so, any questions, any discussion? No? So, we will move to approve item D1, the amendments to the Bernalillo County Code, Chapter Seven, Solid Waste. I move. Do I have a second? Have a second, Commissioner Smith? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All oppose, motion passes. Item two.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the second item is to rescind Administrative Resolution Twenty-Fifteen-Seventy-Eight, our solid waste residential user fees.
Do I have any? So, moved? And, second? And a second? You got those?
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All oppose, passes. And we'll go to item three.
All right, and to wrap this up, motion to, for your approval to approve Administrative Resolution Twenty-Eighteen-Fifty-four, that establishes the solid waste residential user fees, which are the same fees we are charging currently. The addition to this resolution is the establishment of the delinquency penalty for delinquent accounts at a rate of six percent. And I just want to make a note that the rate in the ordinance was eighteen percent, so we are reducing that rate significantly to our account, account holders, and, you know, that's a benefit to them.
So, I got a motion, do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We will move to item E, and we'll have a public hearing on the tax amendment to the Bernalillo County procurement ordinance. Madam Clerk, can I have an ordinance number?
Yes, sir. Ordinance Twenty-Eighteen-Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Do we have anybody for public hearing?
No.
No, we do not.
Good evening, Commissioner Casada, Chair Casada, and Commissioners. My name is Dyna Esquivel, and the item before you is a text, a text amendment for final adoption. The published period has been thirty-day prerequisite has been met. There were no public comments. I stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, can you just explain this? It's my understanding that it adds a veteran's preference to our procurement code?
It doesn't add a, what it does is it establishes the designation of a veteran under the local business preference. So, we do have a local business preference already, but we did not include the term veteran in that preference. So, what it does is it adds that term.
Well, thank you, I appreciate you doing that, I think that's really important.
Yes, it was.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so, I move for approval. I have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, nobody. All right, so, thank you so much. We will go to adoptions of resolutions, and we have tabled A, or deferred it, and we will go to item eleven-B. Madam Clerk, can we have the two resolution numbers, please?
V1 is AR Twenty-Eighteen-Fifty-Five, V2 is AR Twenty-Eighteen-Fifty-Six.
Okay. And so, we will, item one.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name's Clay Campbell, I'm Chief of Staff to Bernalillo County Manager Julie Morgasbaka. And tonight for this agenda item, you have two motions before you. The first is to adopt our six-year fiscally-constrained capital improvement plan for the Twenty-Eighteen-to-Twenty-Twenty-Four period. Within that, we have funds identified for the Twenty-Eighteen Geo Bond Cycle for projects for six bond questions, which then lead to the second motion, which is to approve the six general obligation bond questions for the general election ballot in November. The bond is set this year at thirty-eight-point-seven million dollars, and preliminarily, in Twenty-Twenty and Twenty-Twenty-Two, for thirty-eight and a half million. And a variety of projects for libraries, recreation, storm drainage roads, public safety, county buildings, et cetera, are proposed in this package. And as you all know, we try to leverage one source of money to obtain others, so some of these projects, we got money for from the state last year, some of them we'll be pursuing money for from the state next year. So, it's a constant effort to try and scaffold money and accumulate what we need for the projects to be built and constructed. I stand for any questions you may have right now.
Move approval?
I have a motion. Any more comments? Second? All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All oppose, passes.
Great.
Approval of the administrative resolution?
And good evening again. I'm here also to introduce on agenda item eleven-C, AMAFKA, our Flood Control Authority, their request for placement of a general obligation bond question for them on our general election ballot. I have Chairman of the Board Ron Brown and Financial Administrative Services Director Herman Chavez here, if you have any questions. But election law is, given AMAFKA the opportunity to request County Commission approval to place their bond item on the even number to your election.
I'm sorry to stop you there. We're on item B2, that's the general obligation.
Move approval? Second.
I have a motion, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All oppose, that motion passes. Sorry, I went one and then two. Now, we are on, on the AMAFKA, and before we move forward, Madam Clerk, can I have, if you want to give me all these numbers, we could just knock that out right now. I'm not allowed to do that, okay? So, give me that one number now.
No, we have to do one by one, Mr. Chairman. AR Twenty-Eighteen-Dash-Fifty-Seven.
Okay, fifty-seven, thank you.
For AMAFKA.
Okay. Okay, and so, you've already explained yourself on the AMAFKA. Do you have any comments, questions? No? I have a motion for approval?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes, we'll go to finance. Bernalillo County, general obligation bond. Madam Clerk, can I have a resolution number, please?
Yes, sir. D for finance is Twenty-Eighteen-Dash-Fifty-Eight, FR Twenty-Eighteen.
FR Fifty-Eight, okay.
I'm Shirley Reagan, Deputy County Manager for Finance, Chair Casada and Commissioners. On June twelfth, Twenty-Eighteen, the Board adopted Bond Ordinance Twenty-Eighteen-Nineteen, authorizing the issuance of the Bernalillo County General Obligation Bond Series Twenty-Eighteen in the amount of sixteen million dollars. The Board also delegated authority to the County Manager and the Deputy County Manager for Finance to accept one or more binding bids, select the purchasers, and to determine the final terms of the bonds, subject to the parameters and conditions contained in the bond ordinance. The sale was held on July tenth, Twenty-Eighteen, on the Grant Street Auction Website via a competitive sale process. The best bidder for the Geo Series Twenty-Eighteen was Morgan Stanley. Due to the county's AAA bond rating and favorable market conditions, the county was able to take advantage of lower interest rate of two-point-eight-three percent on that bond series. The attached sales certificate provides the terms and conditions of the Geo Series Twenty-Eighteen, and certifies that the final terms of the bonds comply with the parameters and conditions established in the bond ordinance pursuant to the Supplemental Public Securities Act. With that, stand before you with a motion to approve the financial resolution authorizing and accepting the budgeting of the funds from the, from the general obligation bond series, net proceeds of seventeen million, five-hundred-fifty-nine dollars, I mean, seven million, five-hundred-fifty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars, of which sixteen million is for the projects that we'll be financing. We will be depositing one-point-four million into our debt service funds, and also covering all of our debt issuance costs. I stand for questions.
I have no questions. I have a motion for approval.
Second.
And a second, and Commissioner O'Malley has a comment.
I just wanted to comment and thank you, and your team, and our administrative staff, and all of those who worked very hard to secure that AAA rating. It's not easy to do, it says a lot about, you know, our future and the way we're handling our finances, and also the, I mean, in terms of the AAA rating and the rate that we received in terms of interest, if we didn't have that, what, what kind of rate would we be looking at? Do you have an idea?
Chair Casada, Commissioner O'Malley, probably somewhere in the five percent range.
Wow.
And what that would mean is you'd have to either borrow more to cover all of the financing costs, or have less going to the projects if we just stuck within that sixteen million. So, I can't solely take credit for all that we do, it's, it's the guidance that you guys provide, the county manager, and the great staff and employees of the county, as we are prudent with all of the financing choices we make, and how we spend our funds, and all for the betterment of the county. Over the last few years, we've been able to maintain that AAA rating. You'll notice that this year, like, the city of Albuquerque and the state were downgraded, and we were not, because of the practices that we have, our reserves, and things like that, that make the difference.
Thank you, I didn't want to brag on it, so I'm glad you did. Thanks so much.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. All oppose, passes, thank you so much. We will now move on to item E. Madam Clerk, can we have a resolution number, please?
AR Twenty-Eighteen-Dash-Fifty-Nine.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if, sorry, if you can go back to item eleven-D, and who seconded that motion?
I don't recall.
Can we repeat the vote, please?
Stebbins, I think, was the second on that. Yeah.
Thank you.
And she agrees to be at the second, so we're good.
Okay, then.
Okay, please.
Commissioner Casada, I'm Dan McGregor with Bernalillo County Public Works Natural Resources Section, asking for a motion this evening for a resolution to urge Congress to permanently reauthorize and fully fund the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Commission initially took action on this back in Twenty-Fifteen, and it's essentially a renewal of that resolution.
Move approval?
I got a motion? And a second? All, any, any comment? No? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All oppose, passes. Thank you so much. We will now move to item F. Madam Clerk, can I have a resolution number?
Yes, sir, AR Twenty-Eighteen-Dash-Sixty.
Okay. Commissioner O'Malley, Commissioner Hartstevens?
Oh, this, I'm sorry, I've got to move, step around.
Democracy dollars.
Democracy dollars, okay. Thank you, and so, Counselor, I mean, Commissioner Stebbins and I are sponsoring this, and I think it'd probably be a good idea for someone who has been working on this, or who's here today, to talk a little bit about what that's about. And I know that our attorney, Ken Martinez, has been working on it. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, and I do have able assistance here from the Clerk's office, the Deputy County Clerk, and I know we also visited with the Clerk on this. This is a, an opportunity for the Commission to decide whether or not they would like to carry a local government question on their ballot from the city of Albuquerque. This came from the city of Albuquerque through, what they have in their charter is the option to have a petition question issued. This is a specific petition question issued under a specific provision of their charter for a charter amendment, so this is not an ordinance, but it's a charter amendment. So, the city of Albuquerque circulated a petition asking for this charter amendment to create democracy dollars, and had sufficient signatures to do it. We received notification of certificate, certification of sufficient signatures today, so we know that there are sufficient signatures for this to be placed. We know from previous trips to court even, that you have complete control over your ballot, so it's your decision whether or not it'd be on there. Now, a bit about what this is, this would create democracy dollars, which would basically give the ability for registered voters to have a dollar that's a public campaign financing dollar, that they would be able then give to the candidate of their choice pursuant to the city promulgated rules on how they would do that. So, it's a public financing of campaign issue that the city has gone through, and it would like to put on the ballot for the city residents to decide whether or not they wanted to be part of their charter as amended. It would also include on there aligning the city election to go to the Local Election Act, which then kind of combines all the elections at the local level to be kind of the Novembers of the off-years, so that would also be on there, and that language is before you. And I have the Deputy Clerk here who can speak to issues of the ballot size and things of that matter.
Any questions? I know I have a few, but I...
Go ahead.
Now, my first question would be on, on the petition. So, when, so when residents read the petition, it explained on the petition exactly everything? Or was it a, was it a paragraph? Or was it just a sentence? I mean, what, what was on the petition, and were they aware of everything that they were signing up for?
I would be speaking probably a little bit out of term, because this is a city-of-Albuquerque process. My understanding, and I've read the charter, and I had discussions with the city attorney up until walking into here today at four-fifty-five on this, but under the city charter, the petition has to go to the city attorney for his approval. I think it would require five voters to issue the petition, and then it would require sufficient votes, sufficient signatures to invoke the process. It has to be done within sixty days, that was done within sixty days. Now, the issue is it would be placed on the next ballot. If you'll notice that our resolution says the next ballot, general election or the next city ballot, but the next general election ballot is yours, so it would be with your approval. The, my understanding is the city attorney did review the petition for sufficiency of it. You'll note that in your resolution, you have both a summary and the language, which is actually just kind of strike-through and add-through language. is actually just kind of strike-through and add-through language.
Okay.
I, I hope it was clear to the people that signed the certificate, but I was not part of that process. I would defer to the city attorney if they had any response on that. We could seek that for you.
Okay. I just, you know, I think when we start putting things on the ballot, and this is just from experience, from APS, that, right, we, we ran into some problems and some legal problems down the road, because it wasn't completely explained, and all the, all the holes and gaps, in their opinion, were not filled. And so, you know, from reading what I've read at this point, it seems to be a pretty lengthy, if everybody, you know, if they're going to expect it all to be on the ballot, that we need to be aware, that that's going to be a pretty lengthy thing that you're going to be putting on the ballot. And, so, I, I worry about that, that that doesn't come back one way or the other. You know, someone told me that, you know, that this doesn't really affect us, we're in the county, we're putting something on the city. But, I've been thinking about that a little bit, and I know that, you know, when, when, you know, the Commissioners, I mean, when, when, when the city councilors that run in my district, you know, I partner up with, with, with certain city councilors, so it, it does really affect how I, I'm able to do business with some of the partnerships that I'm doing with the city. And I think they've had some concerns about how that works and how that moves forward. And, you know, and that kind of, they brought that to my attention, and I was like, oh, well, I guess you're right. That does make some sense. So, I, I'm wondering if someone here can answer a couple of questions. So, when you get a voucher, and say, I live in the southeast heights, am I able to use that voucher and support a candidate who's running in the South Valley? Or is it just, or can you just give those dollars to people who are running within that district? Because I, I have some concerns about, you know, I know we've always been talking about special interests, but I'm, I'm weary about what you could possibly do with this type of public financing, and can you use it? And, and what happens is it gives special interest groups who support a candidate, you know, a little more power to, to raise money through public financing, and is it an equitable way to say, if there's a three-way race in a district, but yet they have a special interest group who's knocking on doors the rest of the city to support a single candidate within a district? Is that fair? Is that equitable? Is it fair game? And so, you're a candidate that ends up with no democracy dollars, can you now say, oh, well, then I'm going to have to opt out of democracy dollars and go raise money to, to run a race? Or, or you just, you just get what you get? You get the, say, you got 25 bucks, do you run a race on, on 25 bucks? I think, you know, we need to ask some of these questions that, that weren't answered to me when I read, when I read the whole proposal. Is there someone that can answer about how those are put in and how they're moved forward? And, and is there restrictions within the district? And I guess since they're going to come up, how do you track? So, within what I read, it said, if you're, you automatically get a democracy voucher if you voted in the last election, and if you didn't, you can request democracy dollars, which, you know, I'm good with. But, how do you track that? And how do you track that within a household? So, those are some of the questions I just have. I just don't want to put, you know, something on the ballot that, you know, that there might be some questions, and there might be some controversy, and, and, you know, being a Democrat myself, I'm looking at, how do we exactly do fair game for people who want to run for office?
Mr. Chair, those are great questions. I noticed we did have Ms. Ferguson from Common Cause, who is here, and she's been one of the lead advocates on this, and actually the architect, so I defer to her on those very specific questions.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, I'm Heather Ferguson, I'm the Executive Director for Common Cause. We've been working with Olay and Working Families on this initiative now, for the collecting of the signatures. So, I'm going to try to take apart some of the questions, and then have my affiliates also help to answer some of those questions. So, the first question that you asked was to address the concern about whether or not these, the vouchers would be able to be restricted to be given to candidates within the same district of the resident living, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, what we did decide is that this would be something where the vouchers would be sent out to all the registered voters, and you would be able to give your voucher, your democracy dollar, to a city council candidate in your district. But, for mayoral races, of course, those are going to be citywide. So, for that, they would end up going to that one, that one councillor candidate. One of the other questions that you had asked was whether or not the way that the actual program itself works, with a candidate getting still the initial stipend after they have collected the requisite number of $5 contributions and signatures to qualify for the ballot, and then, this is an additional monies on top of that. The reason that we did this is we're modeling after the Seattle vouchers program that they had passed last year. And so, what they did is they were trying to find a fix for what was a 2011 Supreme Court case called the Arizona Free Enterprise Case. And what that did is the City of Albuquerque, along with many other municipalities, this was actually one in Arizona, that they had what was a trigger matching fund. So, if you were a candidate who was privately financed, and you started getting in more donations than a publicly financed candidate, then a trigger fund would up the amount of money that a publicly financed candidate was given from the city, so that they could have a viable campaign. And what happened with this is that those trigger funds were outlawed and ruled unconstitutional in 2011. So, the money has been accruing in the City of Albuquerque, and the candidates have had to run campaigns based on just that initial stipend of getting $1 per registered voter.
Mm-hmm.
And so, what this will be is, in addition to that initial stipend, they will now be able to collect these $25 vouchers that will have to be pulled in from individuals.
Do they still have to do the $5, because they have to do a certain amount of that in order to qualify? Does that still?
Yes.
Is still in place for the democracy dollars?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, it is still in place for the democracy dollars to collect the qualifying number of $5 contributions. And then, you also still have to also collect the qualifying amount of signatures to qualify to be on the ballot as a candidate, as well.
So, okay, thank you. And that kind of clarifies that for me a little bit, a, a lot a bit.
Okay.
Now, so there's three candidates running. One guy doesn't get, he gets a $25 voucher, but he figured out a way to do the $5 somehow, but it doesn't add up in order to run the race. He's stuck with what he's got, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I think that, that is what we were, in, in looking to do this, and with the groups that we've been working with, we were talking about trying to encourage more civic engagement, and getting folks to be able to be back involved from not trying to have to collect from all of the private donors and spending their time dialing $4, but to be able to interact with their constituents on a one-on-one basis, and listen to those constituents who typically can't be those high-dollar donors. This gives those constituents an opportunity to interact with the candidate, tell them about the concerns from their community, and have the candidates address some of them. Did you want to add something? Good point.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Andrea Serrano. I'm Executive Director of Olay, and to address the question about whether or not groups can actually go out and collect democracy dollars, it would actually be the candidate and their, it would be on the candidate to collect those. Individuals are, would also have the option to mail them into the city clerk with the candidate's name. So, special interest groups would not actually be out collecting on behalf of candidates. That's something that they ran into Seattle as well.
Mm-hmm.
There's also mechanisms, so, so the Seattle program also has mechanisms where each individual coupon or democracy dollar has an individual serial number, so they can't be reproduced. And they can't be, you know, they, there's no value for them, you can't sell them. There's really, what this is, is it's about creating a community donor class, and it really is about engaging more people. What we, what they've seen in Seattle is more young people being involved, and, and they, they really saw this as a civic engagement tool.
Mm-hmm.
What we've also seen is that, you know, there's bipartisan support, or even nonpartisan, I should say, support for public financing, and we see that in our city council, we've seen that with mayoral candidates, we've seen that with judicial candidates, and we've also seen that with the 28,000 signatures that we, we collected. Each of those signatures included a conversation with voters from all corners of the city, across party lines, people who were really interested in seeing a program like this in Albuquerque. And that's what's, that's what's really refreshing about this, is it takes us out of that place of having these really charged conversations and getting back down to our community having buy-in in our local elections.
All right. Wow. I, I just, I have so many other, I just, just a lot. Anybody else have any, any questions, any comments? Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, because this makes me nervous, it really does. And I know I've worked with Ms. Ferguson for years in the legislature on a lot of really good bills, including the Local Election Act bill that Kenny Martinez just mentioned. Can I go back to that really quick? You said we had to approve, to get the Local Election Act on, I mean, to be implemented by the county? Why, why is that? Why can't we just, why can't the county clerk just implement the Local Election Act? I'm curious.
The mayor, the City of Albuquerque has to opt in because of their home rule, rule.
Okay.
They have to want to opt in. They can opt out.
Right, okay. So, so, so we're just talking about city elections for the Local Election Act?
Municipal elections.
Yeah.
But, for the city, the mayor's election.
Yeah, okay, just, just clarifying, thank you for that. I, I'm a little nervous too, and, Ms. Ferguson, if you don't mind. When you were, Commissioner Casada was talking about how these petitions were, signatures were, were gotten. I'm nervous that if what I'm seeing in this document was what was given to the people and said, this is what we want you to know in order to sign this petition, some of this, I think, is misleading. It says, are you tired of big money deciding our elections? I don't think this gets big money out of elections at all. You can always opt out, right? You don't have to take democracy dollars, you don't have to take public financing, you can just say, I'm doing none of that. My, my, my uncle is a millionaire, and he'll just give me a million bucks. And so, I, I, I'm nervous that people, if you're going out and saying, we need your signature, because we don't want big money in elections, this doesn't do that.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Smith, to answer your question specifically, no, that was not given out to anyone in the collection of the signatures. What we did have is the actual language of the ballot measure, with every petition, signature gatherer that we had out canvassing, or we had at the primary day election polls. So, they had the actual language and a discussion of what we were actually doing, which is democracy dollars and consolidating our election to join November in adherence with the Local Election Act.
Well, and I appreciate that, because you wouldn't want to give this out to 27,000 people, but it's going to be a lot of copying cost. But, I still think that, that conversation could have been in play when, when you were, when people were being told about this. I'm also a little nervous about basing it on Seattle, which Seattle is the only place in the country that does this, and they have not implemented it really well. There have been some problems, I think you would admit, there's been some problems in Seattle, that I know you're probably trying to avoid those problems, but we could very likely have them here as well. And the other young lady mentioned that it improved the younger turnout, which I looked this up and didn't do that. In fact, one of the things in here, it says, in the last mayoral election in Albuquerque, 68%, the, the voters that turned out were 68% white, 67% over 50. And what I was reading about Seattle was that's exactly what happened with the democracy dollars as well, that it was white over 50 people that used the democracy dollars in their elections.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Smith, I mean, I'll let Andrea add to that, but we'll be happy to get you copies of the reports and the studies that we have procured from Seattle that can address some of those issues. And I think, actually, Eric Riego has looked into some of those a little bit more deeply, if I can let him add to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner's Eric Riego with Working Families. So, I appreciate the concerns about, I, I was actually collecting signatures as well, and there was a conversation, and there were many folks who said, I don't even necessarily support this, but I support at least giving the voters a chance to put it on the ballot. So, I think what this is, and what the city charter says, is that as a governing body of the county, you all get to decide whether to put it on the, on the county ballot, the November ballot, right? If not, it goes to the municipal ballot. So, when we had the conversation, and I had it with about 300 people who I collected signatures from, that, some of them said, well, I'm not sure that it will, in fact, get big money. Some people said, this is great, even if it's a small step in the right direction, let's give it a shot. And what we also had to say, for folks who were skeptical, they said, well, we, we have to convince you between now and November that it's a good idea. And some of the points you're raising, Commissioner, and, and you're raising, Mr. Chairman, that, that, you know, we have to make sure that it's a workable system, because if not, the voters voted down in, in November, right? So, what we're actually asking you tonight, you may think this is a terrible idea, as the original sponsors of legislation before it was gutted by the Supreme Court decision that, that struck down the, the matching part. Commissioner O'Malley and I were on city council when we passed, the council passed this, and the voters passed it with 69% of the vote. We think it's a good idea, but even if you, even if you think it's a bad idea, what we're asking is that the voters, 28,000 of whom, by the way, that was almost 30% of the entire number of Albuquerque city voters who, who voted in the last mayoral election, that they be given an opportunity to decide whether it's a good idea or a bad idea. So, so that's what we're asking. We're asking, obviously, it's your prerogative as a governing body of the county to put this on the ballot, and we respectfully request that you, that you give voters a chance to decide. And that, essentially, even when Counselor Winter voted with us, with Commissioner O'Malley and I, when we were city councilors, he wasn't even crazy about necessarily that it was a good idea or not, but he said, you know, let the voters decide, and 69% in that year said it was a good idea. So, that's what we're asking tonight, you know. I understand there's some concerns, we have a lot more education to do, but we, we hope that you will at least let the voters decide.
Thank you.
Thank you, former, former Senator Riego, who I remember from my first session, you were in the Senate at that time, and good to see you again. Commissioner, Mr. Chair, one last question about the dollars themselves, and I, I understand they're going to be mailed out, and I think I heard somebody say there was a number attached to them or something. Is there a name attached to that number? So, so if I'm, if you mail it out to Commissioner Casada's household, and he and his wife both get one of these, is it his name and his wife's name on the democracy dollars?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Smith, what we would be doing is going by each registered voter, would be assigned what's essentially a tracking number, and so, that would be mailed to each individual registered voter, and then that would be verified prior to any of the funds being dispersed to a candidate once they are turned in.
But, thank you, Mr. Chair. Heather, I think you're spinning it a little differently again. I just asked you, is their name going to be on it? And you said there would be a tracking number, right? Is the, the actual physical name going to be on the democracy dollar?
I see, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question, Commissioner Smith. I think right now, there's some of the administrative things that have not yet been completely hammered out. We're getting a new city clerk who's being appointed at the next city council meeting. And so, since we've been, we have had an interim city clerk now for some time, hopefully as soon as we have someone in place, we'll be working on those details.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And the enabling legislation.
I don't want to go too much deeper into, but Ms. Ferguson knows that I, I passed a disclosure bill that was three years in the making, and, which was eventually vetoed by the governor, thank you. And, so disclosure is very important to me, and with, with just a tracking number, that really bothers me. You know, because anybody, any of us that runs for office, on our campaign disclosure statements, we have to write down exactly who everybody was that donated to our campaign, and to have to have another layer in here to say, oh, I've got to look at 4837 and find out, that's Heather Ferguson, she gave you the democracy dollars, I think is...
Or me grabbing my daughters, you know, and not telling them that they got mail, and putting it where I want to put it, is, you know, that's just, because it has a number, it doesn't need a signature, or does it...
So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, I, I think it's a valid point. There is, there is provision that the city council has to enact enabling legislation. So, all of these concerns, and we hope that you will make sure, because you all have constituents within the city as well, that we make sure that there, we absolutely want this to be a system that is beyond reproach, because it has to succeed, right? We, we don't want there to be issues of lack of transparency. So, we, we will look forward to working with you and, and council and the mayor to make sure that we have all of the safeguards for transparency, and that this is administered absolutely above board. We have to, because we want the system to work. We, we don't want it to fail, obviously, so...
Commissioner Talbert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, this happens to us all the time. We get put in this awkward position as the county commissioner to make a decision for the city election, to make a decision for the city ballot. In my six years, we've had to do this, I think, at least four times, and it's very unsettling and very awkward that the city council just doesn't address it themselves. So, my first question is, if we don't approve it, when would it go on the city ballot?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Talbert, that is a bit of a complicated question, to be honest. This actually falls underneath Article 6, which would typically require that an election would have to be held within 90 days. But, an amendment was passed, I believe, in 2015, which altered that stipulation and could extend that period of time to go, to not have to happen within those 90 days to go onto a general election ballot. But, now that we have the Local Election Act that has been introduced, there's a 70-day blackout period around any general election where the... where the municipalities around the state cannot hold a smaller election. So, to answer your question, I would have to get back to you on that.
So, again, that, that complicated answer to a simple question causes me to pause. Second, our duty tonight is really just to decide, to Senator Riego's point, just to put it on the ballot, right? City county clerk says, "Hey, you can put it on there. Plenty of room." Okay, great. We know that, if she says that.
If she says.
If she says that, right? So, then we can say, "We can put it on there." All these questions we have, though, are for the city council and for the municipality to answer, which maybe they were asking, maybe they weren't. But it's that awkward sort of pause right now that has us, again, deciding to put something on a ballot that theoretically, the only person, well, some of us are unincorporated, incorporated, but still, it's just weird. Second, I like your comment about trying to coordinate the elections, okay? I think that that's smart. I think we wanna do that. So, my question is to Mr. Martinez, can we split that part out if we said, "Hey, we like that. We want that. Yeah, let's coordinate elections." Can we vote to put that on the ballot and say, "Yeah, let's go for that"? If we don't like this other part, are they together? That we have to do it together? I'm looking whoever can answer. I don't know, because I, I think we have too many elections to begin with. And I think we've talked about there should be a coordination and we should align them all. So, APS, so that more people will go out and vote, because you don't have just an APS election that, you know, we get three percent of the electorate go out or, you know, versus, you know, a general where we have a lot more. And that makes sense to have things in the general, because most people wanna be a part of that, so.
That question was kind of presented as we were moving forward. What is the possibility of dividing the question and having a question being on the ballot as to democracy dollar? Another question being on the ballot as to whether or not the citizens voting in the city election on the county ballot, on a, on a city question on the county ballot would like to opt into the Local Election Act? That's a, that's a great question. I don't know the answer off the top of my head, because we'd have to go back to the city charter. Because this was, this was placed as a question underneath the charter as a charter amendment. It just happens to have the aligning of the election on the democracy dollars to align with the Local Election Act, which is probably a good idea, because what you're usually thinking moving forward is if you're gonna draft legislation, you wanna align it with subsequent legislation so that it doesn't become that question. My understanding is, and, and just my understanding in my conversations with attorneys, the city attorney's office, is they intend to move forward on opting into the Local Election Act on their own anyway. And it was also my understanding that they intended to do that before the issuance of the ballot, so that that wouldn't even be a question. Because one question was, "Well, is it even log rolling?" In other words, are you asking two questions in one presentation, right? Local Election Act and democracy dollars. It was my understanding, and they said, "Well, let's, we wanna put it here to align the elections and the dollars altogether so that it makes sense for folks in the future." But we also intend to put the question as a city council question that they could vote on into the local, um, election. So, I, I would, I would defer to the commission on what they wanna do. You have the authority to divide the question, but we're actually dividing a question from a proposed charter amendment. If it was kind of something different than that, it's kind of weird, because it comes to you as a proposed charter amendment. Now, the proposed charter amendment, and I looked at it when this question was presented, the proposed charter amendment that has the signatures that were sufficient, that were counted to do that, has opting into the Local Election Act in that proposed charter amendment. So, the answer is, I think you could divide the question, and I think you could, could do it. We'd have to split it up. But then we'd also have to go back to our clerk and say, "Now, we're putting not two items on the ballot." We're not putting one more additional item after the AMAFCA and the GeoBond series, but we're also gonna be putting now two questions on charter amendments. And the next question I would have, and, and Mr. Diaz could probably speak to this, but would we have to put the charter amendments in totality twice? One that has the amendments in there doing the Local Election Act, and the other one having the amendments in there to do the democracy dollars? A possibility is on the question, and I had started drafting an amendment that would say, "Okay, by August twenty-eighth, which is the drop dead date to send this stuff to the state of, of New Mexico, that by August twenty-eighth, these questions need to be answered, or else it doesn't go on the ballot." So, that language is kind of in there about the count, but now we could add that language, if you'd like, as an amendment that said that if this, if, if the city has not opted into it by August twenty-eighth, then we have a problem with the addition of the local option or two questions. So, you have several ways to go. You can divide the question and put both questions on. Now, does it fit on the ballot? The other thing you can do is you can say, "We vote on this tonight to put it on the ballot, but we have certain prerequisites that we want answered, or else it doesn't go on by the drop dead date of August twenty-eighth." And the problem here is just a real-time government problem in that the city council meetings and the county commission meetings don't align in the deadlines for the election.
Well, again, this is, I started out my conversation by saying, "This just puts us in an awkward spot." And it, and it happens more times than not, and it's not your guys' fault, okay? You're just bringing something, saying, "Hey, we wanna get it on our ballot." It's, you know, the way we have the system set up that allows us, or asks us, to make a decision for another group for a different election that we're not even a part of, that is uncomfortable. Even if it's a good question, even if it's something we all agree upon, it's still just strange, and it makes me uncomfortable. So, um, from the standpoint of just a vote to put it on the ballot, right? We can make that decision if we decide just to put it on the ballot. That's, that's, we can make that decision. But to me, it just seems like there are a lot more questions than are answers. For, and even with you guys, in terms of you not understanding it, and I still just don't like the fact that the city council doesn't put it on their own freaking ballot and let the city vote for it as to if they wanna do that for democracy dollars, because the county isn't a part of it. So, anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, just, just quickly on that point, part of, part of the urgency is when we passed this in two thousand five, we were, we were able to, to first try public financing in a, in a city council race, which is a much smaller scale, to try to address these concerns, right? So, if, if you all choose not to, the twenty-eight thousand signatures, many of them are constituents who may be ambivalent about it, but their understanding, when we explained to them what was going on the ballot, is that this is an opportunity for us to put on the ballot. You can decide later. And again, you all may come out publicly and, and say it's not a good idea for your constituents. But if we don't put it on this ballot, then we will miss an entire cycle of city council elections. So, essentially, we will be deferring it till twenty twenty-one. So, we'll be essentially deferring it to the next mayoral election. So, and maybe that's not a problem for some folks, but we, we would respectfully request, it would be nice to be able to try it out with city council, if there are, if there are challenges, for us to be able to address those challenges before we have another mayoral election in twenty twenty-one. At the end of the day, this is really twenty-eight thousand Albuquerque, Albuquerque residents who said, "We think, uh, we support putting this on the ballot." And I do, again, as a recovering elected official, former elected official, I do think it's, it's, it's a, it's a good idea to let the voters just decide. And again, they may decide it's not a good idea, but I think they should be given that opportunity, so.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is not the, well, we've had many controversial questions that have come on the ballot. On the most, in the most recent history, there was the issue of abortion. There was some abortion language that, that came out. And we had a lot of people who got organized on both sides of that issue, and, and that's what, that's democracy, right? So, the way I feel about it is if there, you know, folks have to look, I mean, I'm, I'm always hearing, "Well, I didn't know, you know, I didn't know that question was about. I didn't understand that question." That's the voters' responsibility to get educated on a question. So, we, we're saying, "Oh, well, they, they won't know, or they're not gonna get educated, so therefore, we're not gonna put it in front of them." That's not the way it works, you know. With any candidate, you have to do your homework, and you have to do your homework on a question, too. And if you disagree with it, or you think it's well, it's not well-written, then you don't have to support it. You can vote against it. Same with candidates. We always try to put our best side forward, but at the same time, people are gonna investigate, you know, they're gonna investigate our record, and they're gonna see what they don't like, and they, they have that option of voting against it. So, you have the option to not support it, but I think it's important to put it before the voters. So, that's why, you know, I'm co-sponsoring it. It's, and if it's flawed, or it's severely flawed, and that's happened before with other questions, that, you know, sometimes that doesn't pass. So, it's up to the proponents and the folks who disagree. They're gonna have to get out there and, and advocate for it, or, uh, you know, advocate against it. So, I don't know how much, so that's, those are my closing remarks, and that's why I think it's important to put it forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Hart-Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I just have a couple of quick questions, because I was reading some information that's been circulating, wondering if it's accurate. Would these democracy dollars be available to anybody or just registered voters?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Stevens, these would be given to and able to be received by federally eligible donors. So, initially, it would be registered voters getting this, who would also be federally eligible donors. And then individuals who also could qualify as such, then that would mean that they would have to be a legal citizen of the United States. Federally eligible has a certain, has guidelines that we can pull up that would allow for, and that could go into some of the enabling legislation for allowing folks who are not registered voters yet to go ahead and get one of these. And what we got to see in, in Seattle is those folks then actually went to register to vote, wanting to take an interest in voting for the candidate that they'd given that to.
So, the idea that these would be available to, um, uh, non-citizens, that's not accurate.
That is not accurate, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Stevens, no. That would not be a federally eligible donor.
Right. Um, second question. Will, if we vote tonight to put it on the ballot, will it go to all Burnley County voters, or just those who live within the city limits?
To my understanding, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Stevens, this would go something to just on the city's ballots. Those who are at the early voting sites, whose address shows up in the city registered limits.
Okay, and there is the capability to make that distinction? So, if somebody comes into an early voting center, this, and lives in the city limits, this will be on his or her ballot? Somebody who lives in unincorporated county, it would not show up on that ballot?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, great. Um, will there be a requirement that this be on the ballot in both English and Spanish?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Stevens, yes, that requirement is. It will have to be in English and Spanish in accordance with our ballot rules.
Right, and it's been determined that there is space for English and Spanish?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Stevens, at this point, we're looking at that in its current form. We believe there's space. Um, we have two state constitutional amendments for state bond issues, of course, six county bond issues, and then AMAFCA bond issue.
Right, and just...
And for the record, my name is Jamie Diaz. I'm deputy county clerk. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Um, one last question. Can you just clarify, how many signatures were collected and submitted? How many ballot signatures were collected and submitted to the city clerk?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hart-Stevens, there were over twenty-eight thousand signatures that were collected and submitted to the city clerk. And the requirement for the city was to have nineteen thousand four hundred and eighty qualify, and we came in well above that.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so, um, I'm, I'm confused on a couple of things. One is, why, why, why would it take so long for, if it went through the city council, to go to an election? Can you explain? I, I'm just, I'm lost there.
So, Mr. Chairman, so, um, since their, their elections are in, the, the next city council election's next year, right? So, if, if we put, if, if you all decide not to put this on the, on the November ballot, then it would automatically, by city charter, go to the municipal ballot next year. But that means that anybody running next year for city council, we have four, four city council races next year, couldn't, couldn't use it. And, and then we have another even-numbered year, and then we don't have another local election.
But it would, but it would go to the voters in a year, but it wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't be able to use it.
You wouldn't be able to use it, so we would be deferring, we'd be missing one election, and we'd be going to the next mayoral election, which, you know, that, you know, that's, I, I think that's a political decision. That's, that's not a legal decision. That's not even a policy decision. That's just kind of a politically, do we think, if twenty-eight thousand people thought this should at least go on the ballot, should we try to put it on the ballot as soon as possible, or should we, you know, punt for a year? And the charter says, Mr. Chairman, the charter says, either you guys decide, the county, county can put it on, or this, or it automatically goes in the municipal ballot.
Okay, it's just, you know, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm kind of torn on this whole subject, and, um, I'm just trying to think out loud. I guess what we can do now is just kind of vote on it, and then, Commissioner Smith?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Just one more question. Did I hear you say that it goes to, it doesn't go to registered voters? It just goes to anybody that's, could be a donor? Because I think you said you, it could go to people that are not registered to vote yet.
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Smith, initially, it would be mailed to every registered voter in the city of Albuquerque. What we have been working on would then be those folks who are not currently registered to vote in these districts could go through an application process, and in order to do that, they would have to be able to be a registered voter and follow the requirements of being a federally eligible donor. So, that means that no, there, there is, there is no non-legal citizen or anybody who could not already vote. If you, I'm kind of butchering how to explain this, but basically, if you could be registered to vote legally, then you can go online and you would be able to receive one of these, and then you would be able to register to vote either then. And that's part of that administrative enabling legislation process that we're talking about needing to hammer out the details for. In Seattle, they did not have a problem with any illegal immigrants voting for this, and it's something where we would be looking at, could this be something where the city clerk would need to implement having those people register to vote and be proven to be eligible to register to vote prior to being able to receive one of these democracy dollars? But illegal immigrants would not be able to receive these or use these, because that would not fall under the guidelines of being a federally eligible donor either.
Did that answer your question?
It does. I guess I, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just don't understand the difference between a federally eligible donor.
So, I, I'm, you know, what I heard was that you, i-if you qualified to register to vote, you could get the democracy dollars to give to a candidate. But, but you don't actually have to register to vote, and you're not obligated to vote, but you can give dollars? Is that what I heard?
I, I think, Mr. Chairman, the, the idea, the whole idea behind this is to get more people involved in the process, right? So, if we only do registered voters, we all know that the voting age population is much larger than the number of voters registered. And I would defer to the clerk, you know, we would love to get more people registered. We all work on that as elected officials, as advocates. We want more people voting. In this last election for city, twenty-five percent of eligible voters voted and picked our council and mayor. And I think we would all agree, we want more people participating, more young people, more people of color, more folks who haven't participated for whatever reason. So, um, we, we set the standard in Seattle, that Seattle set, which we don't just wanna keep talking to the people who are already participating. We wanna encourage other people, young people, poor people, people who feel a little bit disenfranchised, to try to participate, while also holding it to the highest standards. That's, which is why we'll have numbers and, and names and anything else the commission and others suggest would really make this a, a very sound, transparent system. So, I, I guess our request would be, you know, is that, that we work with you to make sure it's a strong system, that we include as many people as possible, but that there are, there are real accountable safeguards in place so that we don't have people who shouldn't be participating, participate. And, you know, we welcome any ideas, and we hope we can work with you if we get this passed, implemented in a way that's as transparent and sound as possible.
Uh, yeah, okay, all right. So, I, I think we're just gonna go ahead and go to a vote. Thank you all so much for your information and your comments. You know, I just have a little bit of heartburn about, I think the city council should be responsible for what happens in the city. And I do, but, you know, I do get the, the fact that it'd be a while before, you know, they're able to implement this, so I'm a, I'm a... Okay, anyway, um, so, we will, uh, do we have a motion for approval for light? I have a motion?
Second.
And a second, okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? No. Fails. Uh, we will go to approvals, county manager.
The extension of the county manager's employment agreement. I think that, you know, we've all kind of discussed this, so, do I have a motion to approve the, I got a motion, and I'll second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Approval passes. Discussion, human resources, veteran and spouse interview preferences?
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Virginia Chavez, and I am the HR Director, and I'm here to, the action is, the yearly report detail compliance with Administrative Resolution two thousand sixteen eighty-nine. It's for military service or military spouse status receiving interviews for vacant positions. On December thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, the Board of County Commissioners approved the Administrative Resolution assuring that qualified individuals with military service and their spouses receive interviews for vacant positions. Burnley County ensures that veterans and their spouses were qualified and apply for vacant positions or granted an interview. And the final hiring decisions are up to the hiring managers and the department directors. For the period of December thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, a total of eight hundred and six vacant positions were posted, and thirty-eight thousand one hundred and eighteen applicants were received. The following information for military service applicants. The total number of individual applications was one thousand three hundred and ninety-five. The number of qualified applicants was two thousand one hundred and seventy. Individuals applied for various and multiple positions. Of those, five hundred and ninety were interviewed, seventy-one were hired, and twenty-four were promoted. For military spouse, one hundred and seventeen individual applications were received, three hundred and twelve qualified applicants, seventy-five were interviewed, four were hired, and zero were promoted. The top three reasons that applicants were not interviewed were as follows. Military documents were not attached to the application in order to determine veteran status, applicants declined an interview, or the departments are currently in the process of the interview process. What we are doing is, we're clarifying some of the language to assure that the applicants know that they have to have the documents attached to the application to ensure qualification, and we're also reaching out to them to make sure that they understand that that's one of, part of the process. I stand for any questions.
Do you have any questions, Commissioner Hart-Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Virginia, for this. Can you go through those numbers again, because I, I'm not sure I understand what your distinctions are, because, for example, for military spouses, you said one hundred and seventeen were received, but then there were three hundred and twelve qualified applicants.
The reason for the difference in the number is, they were individual applicants, but they applied for multiple positions.
Got it. And again, the number of, so, eight hundred and six vacant positions, how many total applications? You said thirty thousand?
Thirty-eight thousand one hundred and eighteen.
And so, total of, if we were to think about this as, well, how many veterans, how many new veteran hires or veteran spouse hires?
The new hires were seventy-one, and the current veteran applicants, current employees, twenty-four were promoted.
Okay, and of the spouses, four hires?
Four hires.
And no promotions?
No promotions.
Okay. So, the, oh, you said that some applicants were not interviewed, even though they may have been either a veteran or the spouse of a veteran. Do those applicants have the opportunity to submit the missing documents?
Yes, if that's what they're lacking, we'll contact them and let them know that they need to attach the documents to the application. Sometimes they do, and sometimes they don't. We're clarifying the language in the application process, so that it's clear that that's a requirement, and they need to submit that with the application, and to try to increase these numbers.
Great, and this is well-advertised on, the Burnco jobs.
Yes.
Page that individuals who are either veterans or spouses, if they present their required documents, will get an interview.
Yes, and we're also making sure that we simplified the language, because I think that it was a bit confusing. So, we've looked at it, based on the numbers, we're looking to see how we can improve, so that people understand what the requirements are, so that it's easier for them to get qualified and interviewed.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Virginia.
Thank you so much. So, do we have, I move for approval?
Aye.
Have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, it's just a discussion, I'm not motioning anything here. Good luck.
Thank you, and we'll report next year on any, on the numbers for next year. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, we used to have a section that was for announcements that I don't see on here anyway, but I just wanted to say that tomorrow at noon, I'll be holding our annual District Three constituent lunch, and our speaker will be our esteemed county clerk. So, I just wanted to invite anybody here, or anybody who might be watching, we do hold these at the McKinley Community Center at noon, and the clerk will be talking about the upcoming election. So, I wanted to just make that announcement and let people know that all are invited, whether or not you live in District Three, or even, you don't even have to live in Burnley County in order to come, so, I'm sure it will be exciting and informative. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next meeting is Tuesday, August twenty-eighth, no, but we're going to announce it as Tuesday, August twenty-eighth, administrative meeting at five p.m. at Vincent E. Grego Chambers, all right? More announcements to come. This meeting is now adjourned, thank you all.